Maybe go ahead and call the October work session to order. School safety and security, Rachel.
Thank you. Before I begin, I want to introduce, reintroduce Director Marty Butts, who's Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Marty has been involved in, well, first of all, safety is on his mind every day because he and I talk almost every day about that. But he's also been very involved participating in the various assessments that have taken place over the last four months. And so I thought that if there were any questions this evening that you might have, he might be the one to answer that more fully than I might. So just that's my caveat for the evening. And so I'm going to begin with our school safety and security presentation tonight for a work session. The components for tonight are really for facilities, but there's facilities part one, which is looking at our facility assessment concerning the daily environment that we offer to our students and staff and the repairs and improvements that could be made in order to make things more comfortable for our students and staff. And then facilities part two is looking at what we are at risk at as far as both seismic and what we can beef up and bolster as far as security and what those recommendations are. So facilities part one and two, then looking at emergency preparedness in the Mount Angel School District, and finally, looking at school culture and climate because those all weave in together. And if you look at this picture of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, everything we're talking about tonight is those first four levels of Maslow's hierarchy of basic needs. And we want to make sure that we're meeting all of those in our school system. So I'm starting with facilities part one and the daily environment that we offer for our students. And you may remember that we had a facility condition assessment that Superintendent Stoops had arranged for and was available in March of 2021. And what we learned, that there are some things that need to be replaced in order to provide a comfortable and daily safe environment for our students. Some of the big things that came out of that are that, these are the big items, our roofing, not just the tiles, but the actual structure of the roofing needs to be replaced at Mam's so that we don't end up having some kind of flooding situation happening in the school. Our plumbing at Saint Mary's needs to be replaced, which is another essential utility that we need to have in place for our students. Electrical, both at Mam's and JFK. And I believe most importantly, our heating systems at all of these schools are very old and we never want our students to be cold. And someday, hopefully not too hot, we can work on getting air conditioning as well. So that's facilities part one. Before I move on, are there specific questions about that that I shared or anything you want to know? Because you've seen this before and I'm happy to reshare with you. So facilities part two is looking at where our risks are. And one of them being our seismic evaluation from ZCS Engineering. And this is almost 400 pages. So if you didn't get a copy of this and you would like a copy, I'm happy to share it with you. And what we're going to talk about next is why would we be looking at seismic information during our safety and security work session? What is the status of our facilities in relation to seismic rehabilitation? And what needs to be bolstered? So the reason, of course, is that we are definitely Oregon in a hot zone, so to speak, for possibility of a large earthquake. So we need to pay attention to that. Because we are a smaller district and we have a community that is very involved in our district, we wanted to look particularly at the gyms because those are community gathering spaces in times of a crisis or emergency. And what was noted in the ZCS evaluation was that while all of our facilities have a moderate risk, our Mount Angel Middle School gym has a high risk of collapsing in an earthquake. We have good news though, and you've heard this before, that we were eligible and granted a seismic retrofit grant of almost $2.5 million just this past summer. It has to be spent on the Mount Angel Middle School gym, however. As much as we might want it to go to other things, it needs to go to the gym. And we received this grant particularly because, again, it is a community gathering place in times of a crisis or an emergency. Our request for proposals for seismic rehabilitation and retrofit will be made public later this week. So that's coming up to RFP and the work is to be completed next summer.
Yes, Marty, do we know what that work might look like? What would they need to be creating? Do you have an idea given that?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit to it. As you, have you read through this or worked through it at all? It talks about the gas spiking, it talks about the blue ramps, the structure, the physical structure, you know, not collapsing in an earthquake situation, right? So, but there's the adjoining roofs, there's the boiler, there's cafeteria and kitchen. So it's a very complicated upgrade. And that's something that ZC, well, I wouldn't say ZCS, that's part of the RFQ that we're going out for proposal.
I guess my follow-up question would be, is there much of the gym building that's eligible given an upgrade? Or are we adding?
According to initial, yes.
Okay.
Yes. So there's a lot of it that needs to be addressed. Yes.
What are you asking for the proposals to be submitted by?
That is an excellent question. I think they have, is it three weeks?
Yes, I didn't state that.
I am bringing the RFP here.
I'm just saying.
It's happening rather quickly.
It is.
We'll know whether or not that's going to be enough to fix what we need to fix, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, same within a month.
Yes. And I would be pleased to bring forward the RFP at next week or next month's meeting, if you wish. Our hope and desire is that by the January board meeting, that an RFP will be selected for your approval. That's, so we're going to move swiftly. So the last thing that happened as far as facilities were facility assessments and tours for security. And those took place this summer and Marty led those efforts. In addition to Marty, the Mount Angel Police Department participated in tours so that new staff members there could get a sense of the schools and how they were laid out. And our ESD Emergency Preparation Consultant, David Solomon, also, was helping Marty with lead and they filled out a rather lengthy assessment that I'm happy to send you for your viewing pleasure, that talks about all of the interior, exterior, also looking at the surrounding area, looking at halls, commons, kitchens, cafeterias, restrooms, classrooms, custodial areas, any social areas and all offices. So they were very thorough in what they did. And Marty, my understanding and from what I've read is that we actually, in most instances, came out very well in this particular assessment, although there were some areas that needed to be looked at.
Correct.
Okay. So these were areas of recognition that came out of the assessment. Our safety equipment is maintained and in good working order. The grounds are orderly and well-maintained. And staff demonstrate a safety awareness, meaning active supervision, discussion, suggestions about safety are pretty routine. And this would have been during summer school when they were also evaluating that. We also have some areas where some recommendations were made. And the asterisk down up there is because the recommendations that were made were really to live within our means. There are certainly some high price tag recommendations they could have made, but that wasn't realistic. So they looked at things that are more to our current budget. Fire extinguishers were not being checked every month. We need to look at doing that. We want to make sure that all staff participate in drills. And my understanding is that there are times where kitchen staff and our custodial staff may not be, so we will be taking care of that. We want to make sure our custodial staff have two-way radios on them at all times. And then the JFK chemistry classroom has an iWash station as well as a Sharps container. So those are the recommendations that came out of that particular assessment. Are there questions that Marty might be able to answer for you?
Did the survey address issues of the security of each building? Entry-out security anthem, or is that more?
That falls more into the SRTI.
Okay.
Currently, we don't have two-way radios for the custodians.
Not that I know of.
So each school's on their own? Like if they want to, like the office wants to call the custodian, they're not all?
Cell phones, everyone always have cell phones.
Not two-way radios.
Not two-way.
So.
Those are two-way radios that are used among staff?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So it's a good recommendation. And in an emergency, we want to make sure that those two-way, two-way radios are there and being utilized all the time on a proper channel. Other questions? Fire extinguisher. First aid injury response preparedness. So this was another assessment that Marty did with Cintas and representative for that company, Selena Kaufman. And they conducted an assessment and they were very thorough. They went through every single classroom in the school district, all offices and gyms, I'm assuming.
Kitchens.
Kitchens.
Pretty much the whole school concession stands. Football, all sports, safety bags. That was pretty thorough evaluation.
And we did get a commendation as far as having private and secure student health rooms. But there were some recommendations, some strong ones, that we replenish all classroom first aid kits. The iWash station came up again. They need to be up to date, both in the chemistry room and the shop classes at JFK. Make sure that our sports first aid kits are replenished and provide comprehensive first aid kits for each school office. Which is not to say they don't have them, but they could be bigger and better. Questions? All right, then I'm going to move into the next part of the work session, which is looking at emergency preparedness specifically for different areas. What is our emergency operations plan? A revisit of standard response protocol, which I've shared a couple of times with the board. What are our crisis management guide looks like? And then finally, working with our local partners. So I'll start with emergency operations. But first, I want to share this. This came from the Uvalde school shooting. Four key takeaways for educators from the first inquiry. And this came from Education Week. There were four takeaways. Frequent real lockdowns may have led to what they call emergency bias because in Uvalde, the school there was next to a main thoroughfare where there were often lockdowns. Aging buildings, faulty locks, and inconsistent practices were prevalent. There was a failed police response despite advanced planning and potential signs were unreported. I bring those things into play now, even though they're heavy and serious because they are also interwoven in the next pieces of the work session. What we know, and this goes for instruction, teaching, and learning as well, prevention is the most effective intervention. So the emergency operations plan takes all those things into consideration. And a good emergency operations plan first looks at an incident command system or what they call an ICS, meaning a chain of command. There's someone on site and we know who that person is in advance. There's someone at a communication center and we know who that person is in advance. So people know what their roles are as far as leading. But also, central office staff or those within the school where something might take place know what their assignments are as well. In other words, Sue Sprower would know in advance if she needs to relocate students or contact Jervis to bring extra buses to relocate students. Or Stacy Kleinschmidt would know in advance what meals she might need to prepare if we needed to have a reunification and she needed to all of a sudden have grab and go sack lunches. So it would be no surprise to anybody. The coordination would be an incident site, but also an operations center, which would not necessarily be in the same location. Communications, who would be in charge of communications? Who would it go out to and what would be shared? So a good emergency operations plan also discusses or outlines communications. Continuity of operations, meaning after an incident does happen, are we also looking at how we can continue to improve? And plan development and maintenance, what could change to be better? We did not have an emergency operations plan, but we have a draft now. And so working through it, getting close to having it done. Very important when you think about all of these systems that need to be in place. And although this is not something that I would necessarily put in the hands of staff, it needs to be available to everybody to know what the plan is. What staff do need to know and be familiar with is the standard response protocol, which for us is a nice document that comes from I Love You Guys Foundation. And you've been introduced to this before. The reason we go with a standard response protocol like I Love You Guys is because it's action-based, it's very visual. It also has a public address initiation. So some kind of a simple statement is put out so that everyone knows what that signal means and responds to it. It has a time when that address is released. Lockdown, lockout, out of sight is released. So those kinds of things as far as communicating when it starts and when it stops are very simple, said twice and done. And for me, I think the most important piece here and for parents is that there is messaging that is included here. Parents need to know, whether it's through text, phone, or email. And on a side note, I think a relevant one, we are not discouraging students from being off of cell phones, but we are encouraging them to use them wisely when these happen. So as we begin to practice, students will be told, directed, how to use them wisely. Questions on that? Another important piece that has to be in everybody's hands is a crisis management guide. Here's an example of one up there. This is Mount Angels, we have one. It's very good, actually. The assessment that was done by the ESD Safety Consultant gave us the stamp of approval. It just needs some quick updates because the new standard response protocol has five icons and this one only has four. And they don't use certain terms anymore, they don't use lockout. So we want to make sure and update, but everyone has this in their classroom or workspace. So we will have this ready to go in the next couple of weeks. Questions? Yep. I guess I should mention for those that are not here in the room, a good crisis management guide does talk about what the public address is, meaning what statement is going to get made in the school so that signals to everyone what to do. It's very clear in a succinct way, not a lot of words. What are the actions that the staff should take? What are the actions that the students should take? Just in case it was directly impacting a classroom, are there emergency numbers that somebody could call right away that could be in their hands? So it's a posted guide and again, very succinct. During an actual crisis, no one's going to have time to read a lot of words. Another aspect of good emergency preparedness is working with your local partners. So Director Butts and myself will be working with the Mount Angel Police Department and the Mount Angel Fire Department, meeting about every six weeks. They're regularly scheduled. We'll be looking at I Love You Guys standards and protocols in addition to the standard response protocol. They offer a lot of free resources and free training, but they also have an exemplary handbook on reunification exercises and the process to go about that. A reunification exercise takes about a year to plan and do. And we're working at, if we meet every six weeks, then we will be able to do that by next fall. Questions?
What would that look like in exercise?
Well, that's a good question.
So it involves a lot of people, teachers, of course, students come into play in that. I've just gone through a little training program, actually, this afternoon on how that unification process works. And it was a I Love You Guys, you know, YouTube clip and the procedures and how to go through it. So, but to watch it and put it in writing, have a procedure, you know, where it's step A.
Does the exercise look like emptying out a handful of bathrooms, moving them, and practicing?
That's the real deal.
Yeah.
Relocating to another site, actually using our central office staff to play roles, bringing in parents who want to be part of that exercise, students who want to be part of that exercise. There may be students who are role-playing, being injured, all those things. Taylor, I can tell you're interested.
Our trauma kids are going to love that. Our trauma kids are going to eat that up.
Other questions on reunification or other? Also, we want to make sure that we have crisis response because people are traumatized when there are emergencies or crises. We want to ensure that there is support, not only for our students, but also for our staff who might be experiencing trauma after an event. So we will have crisis response from staff in our district and they've already been notified that they are part of the district crisis team. But we also have been in direct contact with the Educational Service District to develop our plan for our crisis response team that dated here. For myself, when I was putting this together, this was maybe the most important information as far as driving the importance of school culture and climate. And this information comes from the Federal Bureau of Investigation Behavioral Analysis Unit. School shooting incidents, 95% of attackers were current students. That has huge implications for how we develop a climate and a culture within our buildings and the supports that we provide for our students. While I'm not saying that all emergency crises would be shootings, I think it's important to put it out there on the table. We also know, based on that same FBI information in their database, that 75% of school attackers felt bullied, persecuted, or threatened by others. Another important reason to be looking very, very closely and continuing to strengthen school culture and climate. In terms of bullying prevention, we have quite a few things in the Mount Angel School District to support eradicating that. Several policies through the school board. Policy ACB, Every Student Belongs. Policy JBB, Educational Equity. Policy JFCF, harassment, intimidation, bullying, cyberbullying, teen dating violence, and domestic violence. And now we have an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee that will begin looking at the data as far as discipline referrals and anything that may be related to bullying and looking at, of course, not names, but incidents and how many tracking number of incidents are happening in buildings. Questions? 27% of school attackers were motivated by suicide or complete desperation. Meaning what we are doing to support and feed healthy, social, and emotional well-being is pivotal. Suicide prevention is something we are always working on in the Mount Angel School District. When we have students that show any signs of suicidal ideation or curiosity, we have a student risk assessment for that that we are required to work through. Every staff member is required to go through QPR or Question Persuaded and Revert training every two years. And a new program that has come to the ESD is ASSIST. And while I don't know of anyone who's taking that training yet, I know that they will be offering that this fall and winter. Questions? Another important piece of school culture and climate is not just specific to Mount Angel, but all of Oregon. You may have seen the posters in schools on Safe Oregon. Safe Oregon was a result of House Bill 4075 that became law in 2016. Safe School or Safe Oregon is an anonymous tip line. And the data that has been collected just in the last year is very interesting to look at. From July 1st, 2021 to just last June 30th, 2022, 69%, well, first of all, there were over 2,000 tips and 69% of them were reported via web. 26 of those that were referred felt that it was an urgent matter. 30% said that it was bullying or harassment incidences. 11% of the tips said there would be a threat to safety. 9% suicidal ideation, depression, or self-harm. And 9% threats of school violence. So it's very important that our students know where to find this information and what to do with it. So we make sure that those posters are in bathrooms and hallways. And if you don't see them, I want to know.
I can't like, I can't quite remember if they're, we have so many posters everywhere all the time. I will make sure to look.
I know Mr. Peterson, I know. I've always left that link on our weekly and monthly resources.
I can check if we have it on our morning announcement that gets sent out every day.
Nice.
It was always there. Which doesn't surprise me that it's afforded to be a web because I'm, that's a live link.
Time to, which it's a, it's a leadership student that does morning announcements and it's what she sends out every single day. So it's easy, just copy paste and send all of them.
Time to revitalize that.
Yeah. I'll talk to Peterson or send him an email tomorrow and then we can get that proof changed.
Good. As was mentioned earlier in the four key takeaways from Uvalde, potential signs went unrecorded. We are one of the luckiest places on the planet as far as being able to work through student threat assessments because what is known nationally and internationally came from the Willamette Valley and the work of John Bandreo and Salem Kaiser School District. He's internationally known, his work is quite extensive. And so what we do have are student behavior assessments that can get at the root and make sure that things are reported and analyzed and assessed. We have Sexual Incident Response Committee, which is short, the short acronym for that is CIRC. When we see or hear of incidents that may be inappropriate. We have Level One and Level Two Student Behavior Assessments that used to be called threat assessments, but we're looking for the term behavior assessments so that when an incident is either heard of or happens that we can run through a series of. or happens that we can run through a series of questions. Questions on that?
Rachel, we do have, going back a couple of sites, we do have, I think it's four staff members assist trained.
Oh, thank you for looking at.
We have at least four currently.
I think it would be very helpful if Director Gordon gave some kind of a presentation this year on, on assist and, and the other aspects of this that are part of culture and climate and making sure that students feel safe. We do have a lot of resources that we are already using and staff in order to help nurture a school culture and climate that is positive, safe, and non-threatening. We have Character Strong, we have PAX, which is used at Saint Mary's, Positive Behavior Intervention Support, or PBIS. One of our counselors, Arilla Utley, is point five or half-time secondary socio-emotional learning support. We have Trillium Services that we continue to use and we have our school counselor at the elementary school. Recommendations and next steps. Well, there's certainly a lot of things that we could do to strengthen. First, let's talk about repairing, renovating, and upgrading our buildings and equipment so that we can provide a safe and comfortable daily environment for our students. That's the very bottom rung of Maslow's hierarchy of needs are, are the needs getting met so that people feel safe to even think and, and learn. We want to ensure that each school can provide a working heating system for students and for staff. And you may know this, but any audience members that see this may not know that our boilers at all three schools, our heating systems are at the end of their life. And so we do need to look at this seriously and see what we are going to do to address this issue as a school district. It would be nice, we need to ensure that each school has a separate, separate entry vestibule, like what JFK has. MANS does in a way, but it has an entry that gets back into other areas. And Saint Mary's does not have a separate vestibule area. That, that's a recommendation that would be very strong. Repair and upgrade our doors, exterior and interior as needed. All of our doors now passed the tug test because Director Budson took care of that last spring. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be getting newer doors. Some of those doors have been in place for more than fifty years, especially the exterior ones. And we could bolster by having doors.
Continuous work. The doors are just age, you know, especially down at middle school. And we put a lot of time and effort into the middle school.
Is classroom doors in the school, they lock from the inside or outside?
Not sure, how do you answer that? Yes.
Yes, like so the teacher.
Some do, some don't.
Some do and some don't. Okay, so during lockdown, the teacher would have to go outside and.
To do at the middle school.
Yeah.
Elementary has a lock from the inside.
From the inside, but middle school is not.
You know, and the high school, I'm not sure. Maybe it's a key.
I'm so nervous.
Some of how.
I can't remember if they lock them. I'm gonna say they do, but I'm not a, I don't know if they lock.
So it's, it's definitely a work in progress on all the doors, windows, blinds.
More work to do. Transition to a keyless electronic entry at all sites rather than depending on keys.
You know, the outside gates of the middle school, can hands still just reach through them?
Yes.
Not all of them.
Well, not all hands or not all gates.
Not all gates can you reach through. I know that the one right by the office is fairly easy.
It still can be, yeah, I think they try that all the time. Yeah, I'm just like.
But the, the, the ones in the back, you know, they're, the, the wire, you can't get your.
Well, I think they're different, yeah.
Yeah, they're a little bit, a different design.
Something that would take a lot to fix.
We are actually looking at that putting. Yes, I'm looking into it.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
The kids figured that one out like instantly, says we have the gates up or they're like, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're just going to transition to keyless, is that just the entry of buildings, entry into the buildings?
Well, it depends on how much we can buy, right? I mean, we could have keyless entry everywhere, every exterior door around the school.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
Because I would, I would love to see, Rachel, when I was working behind the scenes to gather monies for, you know, everything that we're talking about here when it comes to safety. And, and I find that the electronic entry to all sites is hugely important to have the system working not only, you know, in line with, with our procedures in lockdown. Old. With, with this book, I mean, having the control of what's going out. There was some evaluation that day at the schools on how we are notifying classes in a hold situation or a lockdown situation, how does that work? Does it go through the phone system or, and, or the PA system? And there's different systems right now and, and having, having put these systems all together and have it work together as one. Because, you know, if, if in certain situations, if the office manager pushes a button and locks all the classroom doors, you know, and a certain sound goes off that's telling the students what to do, clear the hallways, you know, certain things. So this, this to me is really high priority for me, so. Along with, well, it's all high priority, you know, safety, you can't put a price on it. It's a matter of raising the money to do it.
So currently, all, all educators have a key to the exterior doors so they can come in and out plus their own classroom door, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just a matter of making sure that they walk behind them versus using the electronic. Yeah, okay.
The electronic version, you know, takes the guesswork out of it.
Oh, I, I totally, totally one thousand percent support the electronic version.
Yeah, but for now, it's, this is what we're working with, yeah. How we make it work effectively, how we communicate, you know, through, you know, the office managers, the teachers, staff, the faculty, the students, to make sure that we're on the same page when we have a situation that we need to respond to. How's that look? How are we working with our police and fire department to address a situation when it occurs in training? So there's a lot to it. Sorry.
No, you did not interrupt. It's your, your information is extremely helpful. Something else that goes along with this would be more security cameras. We have some, but we would benefit from having more. We also want to ensure that each school has more than just a plastic bag with gloves and band-aids, but actually has a pretty comprehensive first aid kit. Right now, that is not the case. We do have minimal. We have something, but we can do better and we want to do better.
So currently, if students need to stay in place in their classroom, we don't, we just have the minimal safety stuff in the classroom.
So as far as having a comfortable daily environment, those would be the recommendations. Recommendation number two, preparedness practice. Up, update the materials. So for example, the Crisis Management Guide, making sure that we get our emergency operations plan finished, but also in the hands if needed. Schedule drills and communicate with families so that those go together for me. We're looking at doing different drills quarterly. And it may be, some of them may be a hold or some of them may be a lockdown. One might be a secure, we're not going to do the same thing every time. We want it to be different. But the important piece to that is making sure that parents know that they can hopefully do it. Families don't generally respond very well when they find out from their children who come home that we had a lockdown and they, they not have the information, even if it's a practice, we need to be doing that. Tabletop and reunification exercises. I shared this morning with our administrators in an administrative team meeting that sometime in the next month or so, but I'm not going to tell them when, we're going to start an administration meeting and I'm going to tell them that their schools are in lockdown and we're going to have a tabletop exercise to talk through what they need to do. Do they know what to do? Do they know who to contact? So we will be having several tabletop exercises this year so that they really can cement what they need to be doing in an emergency. And then we're also again working with Mount Angel Police Department and Mount Angel Fire Department on reunification exercise preparedness. Other recommendations, but we want to continue with a focus on students' social and emotional wellbeing. And that means that we're fully utilizing our available resources, whether it's Education Service District staff or current staff, keeping with using our current programming. We want to continue focusing on the programs and practices that support student wellbeing. We don't want to see Character Strong go away. We want to continue with PBIS, all of the things that are going to make for a more positive environment. But here's the real kicker. We need to be listening to our students. We need to focus on building relationships. We need to have relationships first. Sometimes in education, we say Maslow before Bloom. So if you're familiar with Bloom's taxonomy and the levels of learning, look at the hierarchy of needs of students first before you think about the teaching and the learning. Maslow before Bloom. We also have the Student Belonging Survey. We're going to have a student and staff climate survey this year. We have the Healthy Teens Survey coming up and Taylor did mention before the meeting that there's another student survey. We need to listen to what our students have to tell us and how they're feeling and we can respond. Be aware, be prepared. Questions?
Can you go back to.
Sure.
How do things like class size affect things like this? Is that not a part of the focusing on students? It's not the way I want to say it, it's not right. Supporting students. How do we, is that, is that even something considered at this point in the game or is that not?
I don't, my experience in thirty-six years would tell me that class size itself doesn't necessarily feed into lack of a strong and nurturing climate and culture. But individual, individual professionals in their classrooms might not deal as well with that. And so I, I don't see a direct link, but I think that there are links for people. I think certain people get very stressed out. I can tell you that when I was a kindergarten teacher, I had thirty-five students in the morning and thirty-five students in the afternoon. And you just act like a duck on top of the water. You're cool and calm and under the water, you are paddling. So I, I appreciate your question. It's really hard to know how to answer it.
No, I, I appreciate, yeah.
Just be the mix of kids. I mean, I've had a class of over thirty and they've been great. And then I've had a class before of like twenty-three and I thought, oh my gosh, it's, you know.
I guess my question would be, maybe more to Teresa's saying is, you know, how do we consider that bullying of students in the classroom and how's that affect, you know, the student belonging to relationships and.
We've already had issues with this. Actually, there's English three classroom and there's two separate classes, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. I'm in the afternoon. I think there's thirty in that classroom. English two in the morning, I think is like twelve. And I've had kids in that classroom who are obviously separated from some of their friends, from some of their friends, which happen all the time, but because they don't have a lot of people to communicate with and connect with, they feel like like, and then the kids in the thirty class are feeling very lost because there are so many kids that the teacher has to get to and they're feeling they aren't being as helped as easily because there are so many. And I've already noticed in teachers from their last class, they are stressed out and upset because their students don't want to listen or they don't want to cooperate with the plan or they don't want to just do their work and it's like translating into the next class. Just their frustrations and like, we're not stupid. You can see the difference. So the whole climate of the classroom changes. But that's just comparison of this to what we're dealing with in the classroom already.
And I do believe that Mount Angel is not unique in terms of seeing students coming to school differently after COVID. And so that question plays probably there also. Other questions?
Do we have a timeline for the surveys going out? I don't remember using anything like that.
Sure, the Healthy Teens, well, let me start with Taylor's, the survey that you've been working on with Ms. Coons. When is that due back? That was sent out last Monday, Tuesday, somewhere in there.
And I reviewed it Thursday with Peterson and we had about a hundred and some students, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty layout. And I told him that I would come review it again this week when we got to more of that two hundred mark. There's two hundred and twenty students-ish in our school. And then I told him, we, I discussed with him that once we met that mark, I would look through more of the comments and then I would individually, if there were specific things that were like, I do not feel comfortable in this community. I don't have a trusted teacher. I feel this way about a certain class. I would go and talk to them individually. And then all of that information regarding teachers, because they could write what subject they're having a problem with, what the teachers can do to help them with it, stuff like that. And all of that was anonymously posted in a, like a spreadsheet and sent on to all staff members so that they interview all of their own information. So it's just a work in progress. I think technically this Friday would be our deadline for finish. Oh, that's, that was what that one called. I'm gonna send them out. I don't know if she still has it in the post or not. So I'm gonna check. That was sent out last Monday-ish. It'd be great if she like labeled some of these sometimes.
So that's survey number one that's active. The Healthy Teen Survey will be taken by those who volunteer to take it and have parent approval, right? Before winter break. So that's coming. The Belonging Survey will happen after winter break sometime in probably January. And then the Student Climate Survey near the end of the year that will help inform some of our decisions and work next year.
At least happening at all levels, the student belonging, student climate.
Well, we did not, last year was the first year for the Student Belonging Survey and we didn't go any lower than fourth grade because we had concerns about reability. But that doesn't mean that we can't collect data from younger students. We just need to find a different way to collect it. It's developmentally appropriate.
Yeah. What did you?
Beginning of the year checking.
Just kind of safety and security stuff that you've discussed, we came back in our assessments and stuff, ties grading to our strategic plan, roll that in to bond, right? Best tool, that's definitely needed at the elementary level. We live in a building that has access to, to most populated areas, cafeteria and the gym right away, right? So I think that using this information along with our strategic. So I think that using this information along with our strategic plan to roll in any information, communicating to our community for the bond work would be essential.
One of the things that will be happening in the coming months will be that a bond committee will come together and look at the needs. My belief is that the safety will figure prominently in the discussion about items that might be selected for a bond and what would get funded. And I would like to propose to the board that we, I mean, assessments like this tell us we're doing great. But there are other things that were even noted tonight that we need to improve when you know better do better and strengthen. So between that and the potential for a bond, my proposal would be that we come back to you in May or June with things that have been improved or will be improved. If you're open to that, I think that would be a good idea.
On one of your slides, you kind of sort of mentioned replacing the AEDs or updating or upgrading.
Yes.
Is that battery packs or built entire unit or?
So it's the entire unit that we need to, yes. Rachel and I are discussing a plan of action for all of our AEDs.
How many do we have collectively in the district? Do we have an idea?
That I know of, nine. But each AED is, you know, it could be $2,500 in AED, so it adds up very quickly. So there are different programs that I'm, that we are reviewing, so.
And do we have a good source of first aid kits and supplies? That's economically priced for. So that's always been kind of a bit of a hurdle is, yeah, we want forsaken, but there are a couple hundred multiple peaks every fashion. And then to keep them updated every year, first base doctor.
Well, one of the first aid program that I'm pushing for, the initial setup cost is quite expensive. But once it's set up where we get that state funding, you know, we don't pay. How do I put this? I can only use the example of like the, like a sweet old police department. You know, 50 officers, we have a massive first aid kit in there, had everything in it, I mean, everything you can think of, right? And that was the most used or utilized first aid kit. The initial cost to purchase it and install it was quite high. But then quarterly, when they would come out in service to make sure that there wasn't any expired stuff, whether it's been used, been replaced, you know, we were looking at like $150, you know, every quarter to keep it up. It's getting it set up.
It's the initial cost.
It's the initial cost. It's getting it set up. The AEDs is something that Rachel and I are discussing. We haven't decided which direction we're going to go there yet, you know, because everything this year, we're definitely looking at budget, budget, budget. So, but what we, what we have in place right now, I think to answer your question, we do have the necessities in place at the schools.
So the basics are there now.
The basics are there now. It's a matter of improvement, you know, so that we're, you know, we are. Yes.
I would like to publicly commend Director Buz because he's been actively pursuing grants to pay for this and has been working with the Marion County Emergency.
Clean Air Act for trying to, and this falls in line with the seismic upgrade for Mount Angel Middle School. How we receive that grant, there's also another grant called the Clean Air Grant. It's for along the lines of shelter in place if we want to use the middle school as a shelter in place for not only for the public, but for fires, for a command center for the fire department to use if, you know, God forbid any fires would happen in suburbanous or stranding areas. So for them to be able to work out, you know, and that falls in line with updating, you know, it's a clean air act, right? So your filtration, your HVAC equipment, the boiler, the water, lighting, emergency power. All these things fall into place. Security, card access again, bringing that up. I mean, you could, I mean, this, all this stuff ties in with so many different moving parts, you know. It's, it's key, so. I'm very excited about where I'm at with the grant process for dovetailing this work and with the Mount Angel Middle School gym. Keep my fingers crossed. My first time doing this. I've never done grants before. But I have certainly talked to a lot of people, like I'm keeping the pressure on, so. To try to achieve, well, 1.75 million, that's what I'm going, so.
We will keep our fingers crossed for you as well.
Please.
Any other questions?
All we're putting on, I think, are.
Thank you for your time and savings.
All right, we do have one action item, the Division 22 assurances. The last board meeting on the 10th, it was reported that we were out of compliance for one, the elementary PE minutes. But we are actually out of compliance, not only for elementary, but secondary as well. And so this is the revised information from the October 15th board meeting.
And our creative action is to let the master schedule.
Are there any questions that I can answer about those two areas, the requirements?
These best to be corrected by next year.
Yeah, well, there was a discussion because Division 22 is about reporting the year before, the year prior. Next year, we will also be out of compliance unless we can fix this. I mean, there is a possibility, it would be quite interruptive, but there is a possibility we could look at doing it after winter break. Important thing is that we need to fix it.
Yeah. Any other questions? Do we have to accept the revised?
Yes.
To accept the revised information?
And then we accept revised information for our Division 22?
Do I have a second? I have a second and then we have a second. All in favor? All right. You name this. All right, no other action items tonight, so I will end the October work session. Thank you.
Thank you.